Look at the EIR for Elondra Park, you can't use it for anything else because it's so contaminated. So it's either gonna be a park, or the only other suggestion called ExxonMobil will have them come in and drill some oil wells, make some money off of the oil. That's the only two alternatives for that park. Otherwise, you know, I didn't win, I'm not gonna be sitting up there, but I am gonna continue to come and stand here and fight for the people of Compton. Thank you.
Joyce Kelly?
Good evening, I am Joyce Kelly. I was a candidate in the 3rd District. I did walk a lot of Sunny Cove. That's where a lot of voters in the 3rd District are. And I'm called, I said yesterday on Facebook, a do-over, there was too much cheating and electioneering going on in the city. And since the 60s and 70s, I have never heard of a bomb scare in City Hall on an election day in Compton. So many different things are happening in Compton during these elections. And it came here by way of modern-day carpetbagger. I have something to say to Asia Brown, so I don't have a whole lot to say to anyone, except congratulations to those who actually won. But think about it, we're gonna have to have a do-over. If I was on that, I'd say, okay, because the same ones are going to win again. But it's the 3rd District we need to look at, and some more things. But I do wish to thank the five women who helped me in my campaign. I wish to thank those who volunteered to call or do anything, contributed a small amount of money. Alita Godwin, I will have my, I think it's seven or eight signs down tomorrow morning, on my way to the courthouse. Because some people need to be stopped, and I'm the person to stop it. Thank you.
Lambo?
Hello, Lambo, City of Compton. I want to address the warrant. You know, item number nine on the warrant for the credit card, American Express. First of all, I'm gonna go back to your kid. Okay, the mic just went out. This is going off, you know.
Try.
Okay. Good afternoon, Lambo, City of Compton. I want to address the warrant, item number nine, the credit card, American Express. Mr. City Manager, I know we supposedly have a new controller, and I don't see any kind of way she can pay for these items without any receipts. First of all, on the actual statement, it says previous balance of six fifty-six ninety-three, and then amount due, eight fifty-nine fifty. But when you look at the charges, they total up to the eight fifty-nine fifty. So, you know, I'm kind of a little confused because the dates on here are so much different. But what really upsets me is that there's four charges to Culver City for liquor and food. There's four charges to Compton, and one of them is for eating out, and to Superior, every one of them is for food. My thing is, why aren't there any receipts here to tell us who, who was, who did the city pay for to go out? And, you know, what are these receipts for? What did they buy from the grocery store? We have one of the candidates, Mr. Omar Bradley, who's actually going to court for misuse of public funds and addressing the credit cards. So I think the citizens need to know about this, and if these are your charges, Mr. Rambo, for you contacting and making complaints on our other elected officials, you might want to check yourself. Then, we have item number two on here from the acting fire chief. And I'm so pleased that he is applying for grants. But I've said it for several years, we actually need a grants department that's gonna oversee these grants. When you look at the specs for any director, manager, supervisor in the department, it's never a requirement to know how to write grants. So if we have a grants department, after them finding grants, we'll pay for themselves because the administrative fee will pay their salaries. And this way, the city won't be held responsible for grants that they can't find, what they did with the money, and we have to come out of the general fund, because there are some grants that are addressed in the audit of June 2014. And last but not least, I want to say, Alita, thank you so much for, it was so professional, the counting of the ballots, I felt. And I just want to thank the people that voted for me, I want to thank the people that even didn't vote for me, just to show your caring for the city to come out and vote. Hopefully, you know, it will get better in time, if it's still Compton here. But, you know, I just want to say thank you. And one last item, I'm sorry, on the warrant, is that travel for Ms. Polk and the other lady. You know, there's a receipt for their, for them going, but they're going to a convention. When will the people know exactly what the convention was about, or what they went there for? Because after all, we are paying for it. Thank you.
Madam City Clerk?
Reconsent agenda?
Sommow.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Counselperson McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zarita?
Yes.
We're at city attorney's reports?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protem, City Council. I think my mic's a little higher than normal. I have gotten a series of inquiries regarding this Measure P litigation, and the impact that it has on the city's receipt of sales tax funds. And we talked about it at the last council meeting. I put a written memo to City Council, and yet, we're still having inquiries. So I thought it would be wise if I make another public statement regarding it. As I said before, there's currently litigation. The filer of the lawsuit is Ms. Boom versus Los Angeles County Register Recorder. The issue before the court is an election challenge. There is a belief that folks outside of the city's boundaries were able to catch, cast a vote on our sales tax initiative. There is four items being sought in that litigation. That the county register recorder be ordered to make available all ballots counting involving Measure P, that there be, that there be allowed to cross-check every address with the precinct maps, that all further recount fees be waived, and that Measure P be voided. So that is in, under election law. The California Constitution, Article 13, Section 32, states, "No legal or equitable process shall issue in any proceeding in any court against this state or any officer to prevent or enjoin the collection of any tax." For those that may have missed it, can't go to court and enjoin a tax. Another sentence. "After payment of a tax claimed to be illegal, an action may maintain to recover the tax paid in such manner as may be provided by the legislature." The legislature has not provided a scheme under election law to recover a tax. There is a procedure under the Tax and Revenue Code where that could happen. That's not the lawsuit that was filed. I didn't file it, I'm not a part of it, the city's not a part of it, I'm just telling you what the case is. Now, there was also some, I'll call it chatter, that there could be a temporary injunction, or some sort of action before this election law matter that could affect the city. There is no jurisdiction when that judge will be faced with the California Constitution and a case that we're not a party to, to be able to enjoin the city. My legal opinion may not be shared by folks in the audience, it may not be shared by folks on the dais. But I ask you this, if you want to disagree with my legal opinion, read the California Constitution. Read the case that was filed. Read Tax and Revenue Code 72.70.5. It's not just, Attorney Boom, one second. It's not just an opinion like my favorite color or TV show. It is a reasoned opinion. And I stand by it. Now, the city may also say, as a business practice, we don't want to spend the proceeds. Got nothing to do with that. If the question to me is, is there a legal impediment to spending Measure P funds? My answer as city attorney is no. I hope that at least squashes my opinion of it. Is there any question?
Well, yeah, with all that being said, it's quite confusing. So I asked you to give me your opinion in writing, I haven't received that yet. And you gave me a report, but then I responded back to give me the legal opinion you gave last Tuesday at council meeting.
I sent it.
Can you resend it? I didn't receive it. Maybe the server was down.
Did you guys see it? Okay.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't see it, so send it to me again. And then also, with all that being said, and you continue to say that the city, that you're not, but when you speak of you, you're speaking of the city, correct?
I said the city is not a party to the litigation.
But, okay, but, but the part that is not making any sense to me is, the city is receiving the funds. The funds that are in question, because of the Measure P that was passed that's in question.
The funds are not in question.
They are, the funds are generated by Measure P.
The funds are not in question based on the lawsuit that was filed. What is in question is an election contest, ballot.
Okay, so to go further, and if it's, if it's, if it's election fraud determined and ruled in the case, that overturns Measure P. I mean, the whole, the root of the whole case is Measure P, which is a sales tax that generate funds to the city of Compton. You can go all the way around what you want to talk about, but we talking about Measure P and tax funds that are generated to the city. So you use the scenario about shooting toothpaste out of tube, and how do you get it back in? You get it back in by a class action suit, if Measure P is overturned. So we have two different opinions, so not saying that your legal opinion is not correct, and you don't know what you're talking about, but I don't agree with it. Because we don't want to face the fact that Measure P is generating sales tax. We want to face the fact that there's been an election contest going on. We not, but we contesting a measure that's generating funds to the city of Compton, and if we spend those funds and it's overturned, who's responsible for paying the funds back?
How about, how about this? Let's say there's Street A and Street B.
No, let's, let's use, let's be simple, let's use Measure P, election day, wrong people voting. That's what we talking about here, that's the issue.
I can't have, I can't have you frame the issue when I'm trying to respond as to the law.
Okay, I just want you to understand my question. My question is Measure P generating funds to the city of Compton.
But that's not the law. The law says there's a process to contest exactly your issue. That issue wasn't filed, is not before the court. So I'm saying, you may be right, Ms. Boom may be right, in her lawsuit. What's before the court is not a tax and revenue case that gets you to refund the money.
Okay, that would be great, believe me, I want to spend the money. I want to fix the streets, but I don't want to be stuck on a council that has to figure out how to pay back millions of dollars. So, so what you're saying is, based on the law that you understand, the, it can be two rulings in the courtroom, either the judge rules against or for. So what's the scenarios if they revoke, or if they rule that people that voted for this measure shouldn't have voted, and the election is overturned? What, what's the consequences? Are there no consequences?
A new election.
So then the funds would stop right there being collected at a one-cent sales tax, one percent sales tax?
Yes.
And what about that money we collected?
That's not before the court.
But it was generated because of Measure P?
I didn't file the lawsuit.
But, so, you, but do you understand my question?
I understand your question, to be honest.
All right, so long as we have it in writing, and, and, I mean, what do you do? When you, you know, you, you got a city attorney and you have to accept opinion, but I just wish that maybe for the benefit of, of my ability to spend the money with a, a clear understanding, I'd like to see a second opinion on that.
Okay, that's into my report, but again, no one is...
And this is, this is, this is far from being funny. Far from being funny, we talking about probably eight million dollars before this matter even goes before the judge. I mean, this is not a laugh in the matter, some things you guys need to take serious. So, Mr. City Manager, I'm gonna request that you go out, I think we have a list of legal firms that we can use, and get a second opinion on the case that's filed as it relates to Measure P.
He's got no authority to do that.
I believe he does, I believe I do. We have a list of legal law firms that we can use in the city manager and council's office.
Where? Where is that?
The list that you provided us, the list that Anthony Willoughby is on, the list that you always say, pick a legal firm off of this list, I'm talking about that same list. Now, if it's a fictitious list now that I want to use it, maybe. But it's clearly in the charter, and I don't know exactly where it is, that it says that the mayor and council can go out for a second, a legal opinion.
You didn't ask mayor and council, you asked the city manager.
To, to do it, I'm not gonna call the legal firm and get it, that's what his job is to do for me.
But the council has to decide to do it.
Okay, can I have a motion to get a second legal?
It's not on the agenda for a motion.
It doesn't matter, I'm gonna do a, what is it called, a, a Madam Clerk, a minute motion?
It's not on the agenda, and it's improper to have a motion.
You can't!
You can do what you want.
Mr. City Manager? Can you agendize it for next week? Then I'm not even gonna argue with you. But can you agendize it for next week, Mr. City Manager? So that we can go out, I mean, what's, what's the problem if, why are you in fear of getting a second opinion?
It's not on the agenda.
So you mean to tell me that you cannot?
Just come up with a motion?
Yes, you can. It's probably falls under the minute motions that you like to use.
That's been on the agenda.
That I don't agree, that I don't believe are legal.
Okay.
Yes.
So if by chance this particular court case is overturned, then can they refile, and then we still end up having to refile and then tell us that we can't use the funds?
There's a statute of limitations that's been missed.
I believe, I want to make sure that I'm understanding, Madam Protem. I believe, I want to make sure that I'm understanding what you're saying. You're, because what you're saying is that I know in court cases that judges can only make decisions on cases that's actually before them, what's in that court case. And that's basically what you're telling us, is that the court case that was filed in this court did not include anything dealing with the funding part of this, but mainly that the fact that it was just, they're saying that it was illegal, a statute, and that is the only thing that's before this court, which means that's the only thing that the judge can make a decision regarding. Does that kind of clarify things? Am I on the right path?
An election contest was filed.
That's right, and that's the only thing that was filed, and that's the only thing.
Not a validate, validation, or reverse validation action.
Thank you, okay. I just want to make sure I understood, thank you.
Madam? But it could be included as a, what do you like, call those things in court? I'm not an attorney by no means, but what do you call when they, they add, not writs, but when somebody adds something to the case? Motions? Mr. Rambo?
Oh, you want the city manager?
Well, I mean, because, I, I, because you, I didn't know if you knew what I was trying to say.
An amendment.
It's amendment to the, so they have to get an attorney to add that to it, they can't just add.
Right, but they can get, but they can get an attorney to add it.
They have to request an attorney to amend their claim, their, their lawsuit.
Right, but I mean, you guys acting like this is something I'm trying to create. Whew, my lord. So, I like, so, so, Mr. City Attorney, so that I'm clear. There is no list for the council to pull from, for, with legal representation?
There's a, there's a resolution for a legal, that has a legal panel that is between us, City Council and the city attorney, it's not with the city manager.
And that's what I've al, that's what I've always been afraid of, the conflict. So every time you offer us the list, or the panel, it ain't a list, it's a panel. Every time you offer us the panel to use for legal representation, as you did for Anthony Willoughby, that they would ultimately answer to you. They wouldn't answer to us as a council or the city manager, they would be answering to you.
They would not answer to the city manager.
And so that's why I always said we need our own list. We need, we, we need, we need, we need to be able to go out and seek legal opinions, or legal advice, because you do not represent the council, you represent the city.
I do represent the council.
No, you don't, I was in a three-month trial, the attorney never stepped in the room.
You're mixing criminal with municipal.
It doesn't matter, you don't represent, you don't represent the council.
Now, if I can answer your last question, the relationship, whatever attorney, the city attorney or outside council, is between city council and the attorney, does not include the city manager. So when you directed the city manager, that's the only thing I responded to, he doesn't have the authority.
And you also said it wasn't a list, or a panel, I said list, you said it's no list, but there is a panel.
No, I gotta go get my signs down. No, no, no.
I'm gonna ask that there's no outbursts in here, this is not a town hall meeting, this is a council meeting. So if you are pressured for time, there's the door. Thank you, and anybody else that outbursts in here is gonna be asked, wants to be quiet and be respectful, and then they're gonna be asked to leave. Thank you. So, Mr. City Manager, or Mr. City Attorney, whoever wants to answer the question, how do we get it on the agenda to get a second opinion on the court case that's filed on Measure P?
Oh, just agendizing?
So I would just agendize it at your request, and the rest, request of the rest of the council.
So is this a request that I'm giving now, since everything's being so technical? And my request, is my request good for this right now?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Madam City Clerk?
One more question, please. Now, Mr. City Attorney, if the court case prevails, then can they come back and then file a claim against the money?
I believe there's a statute of limitations that's been missed.
Madam City Clerk?
Item number five, under new business, is a resolution of the City Council, City of Compton, authorizing the city manager to enter into a funding agreement with the Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transportation Authority pursuant to the Metro Rapid Bus Station Implementation Project.
Sommow.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Counselperson McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zarita?
Yes.
Item number six is a resolution of the City Council, City of Compton, authorizing the city manager to issue a purchase order to Deion &amp; Sons for the provision of gasoline and diesel fuel for the city's fleet and equipment in the amount of eighty-five thousand dollars.
Sommow.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Counselperson McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zarita?
Yes.
Item number seven is a resolution of the City Council, City of Compton, authorizing the city manager to enter into an amendment to extend the agreement with Clean Street Sweeping Services for three months, for continued provisions of citywide street sweeping services, and establish a purchase order in the amount of one hundred twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Sommow.
Uh, second.
Discussion.
Madam, uh, Mayor Protem, on this particular item, Mr. City Manager, I know you, it's only for three months. Is there any particular reason why the RFP was not done prior to this time?
We had the, if you recall, Council Lady, this was on agenda, and we had to pull that item. And then this is just to ex, extend the, the street sweeping until we can bring the item back. So we had it on the agenda, it was pulled on the floor, but we still need to provide street sweeping.
Okay, so we just, okay, that's what I was asking.
Yes, the RFPs are done, and we're just gonna, we're just gonna bring the item back.
Okay.
Roll call.
Counselperson McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zarita?
Yes.
Item number eight is being removed. We're at approval of... We're at approval of warrants, warrant number two-three-eight-nine-three-two, April the eleventh, for Federal Express, where express shipment costs in the amount of seventy-one dollars and ten cents requested by planning. Warrant number two-three-eight-nine-three-five, April the eleventh, for Allen Kennett, for sound equipment for Easter extravaganza.
Madam.
I'm sorry, it's supposed to be Easter.
Yeah, there need to be a change in that one.
Yes.
Okay.
It's Easter.
I'm not sure, but this, this, yeah, it wa, it was not the Easter egg extravaganza.
I think it was Easter egg hunt.
That's what my mother used to call hers, Easter egg extravaganza.
Extravaganza. I'll tell you in one second. Okay, it, instead of Easter egg extravaganza, it's Easter basket, basket giveaway. In the amount of six hundred dollars requested by the City Manager, warrant number two-three-eight-nine-five-two, April the thirteenth, for American Express Travel related services, uh, for miscellaneous and, miscellaneous and refreshment charges in the amount of eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fifty cents requested by the City Manager. Uh, there's a request to remove the next warrant, which is two-three-eight-nine-five-seven. Uh, warrant number two-three-eight-nine-six-six, April the thirteenth, for airline tickets for the twenty-seventeen APA Conventions in the amount of one thousand forty-seven dollars and sixty cents requested by the Planning Department.
Madam City Clerk, which one did you remove?
Uh, warrant number two-three-eight-nine-five-seven for best restoration services.
Okay, got you.
Yes. So there's a request to remove that.
Okay. Okay, so I have a, um... We in discussion?
Uh, motion?
Motion.
Oh, my, my mo, it's a motion? Second. Discussion. I have a, a question about one of the warrants. Since I feel the need to be very transparent with our finances, um, as you know, we have some serious financial issues and embezzlement going on. So I'm gonna ask that, Mr. City Manager, if you can ask the City Controller to come up and give an explanation to the American Express charge that was questioned.
That's, uh, Controller Nita McKay. Mr. Adams may also have some insight on all those.
I'd like to hear from the Controller, please.
Okay. I'm not even sure if you were here then. These are back on March ninth.
I don't think that mic is working. Is that one working?
This one?
Oh, never mind.
It's working.
This one's working?
Yeah.
Yes. Hello, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
I believe the item in question is the American Express, uh, bill for the City Manager's office. And forgive me, I need to look up the detail on this warrant.
You need time?
Can you give me a moment?
Uh-huh. And then I also, I also'd like to know, um, who has possession of the American Express card? And who's authorized to use it?
The card is Counsel Lady, Mayor Counsel, um, Honorable Mayor Pro Tem and Counsel. The card is in my office. Um, my, I am authorized to use the card. We use the card to purchase, um, the Counsel meals at Counsel meetings. We also use it, um, sometimes to buy food items for some of the commission meetings, things like that. Um, that's usually, it's really, that's kind of what it's for. We don't, and we, we did it for travel for the Planning Commission this time because the, uh, the plans were made very late, and they needed to, um, book the tickets and hold the rooms.
So who's authorized to use the card?
Uh, just my office.
You mean?
They, when they want, when people wanna use the American Express card, it just comes strictly from my office.
It's your signature?
It comes, it's authorized by me. So I don't actually sign for it, but it's authorized by me and the City Manager, or whoever's sitting in the City Manager's seat.
And who's, um, how many credit cards does the city have?
To my knowledge, I have one in the American Express card in my office.
And so the, when the staff people purchase gasoline, they use a gas card, or is it just signature account?
The items I believe that you were speaking of are most of the charges on the American Express, and I may be repeating what the City Manager already said, but are for City Council meals prior to the Counsel meeting, or the night of the Counsel meetings. As you can see, there's a detail in number nine of the warrant register on the American Express, and that card is kept in the City Manager's office, authorized, uh, by the City Manager for use. I'm not aware, and maybe the City Treasurer could correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm not aware that the city has any other credit cards besides the one held in the City Manager's office.
Okay, well, can you please research it and let me know if we do? And also, um, with that, with that American Express, you cannot purchase liquor, can you?
Uh, I don't authorize, um, liquor, at least, not, not to my knowledge. If it's brought to my attention, I don't authorize liquor for that.
Okay.
And then also for the gas, uh, you know, we have gas pumps at the yard and at, at other parts of the city.
But I don't think our gas pumps at the yards are working.
Yes, that's where I fuel, we fuel our cars over there.
At the yard?
Yes.
Oh, okay, good. Cause at first they were, they were broke down for a long time.
Now, Mayor Pro Tem, may I respond to the City Controller?
Absolutely.
Um, back during the, I believe it might have been Delfi administration...
It's on.
Um, during the, uh, Delfi administration, the City Council approved a, uh, a resolution that only gives the authority of the City Manager to use a credit card, and it's, the resolution specifically says the City Manager, and there's only, we don't have any credit card, uh, in the Treasurer's office, but it's only, uh, goes to the City Manager's office, and I think it might be up to about twenty-five thousand limit.
So do you have anything you wanna add to that?
No.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam City Controller. Any more discussion? So that comment that was made that somebody was partying and drinking on the credit card has been cleared up, I believe? Any more discussion? Roll call.
Counselperson McCoy.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Zarita.
Yes.
Your counsel comments.
Counselwoman McCoy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. I would just like to thank all the voters who came out to vote, and thank everyone for their support of me. I look forward to, um, doing many things, um, with the city, and we will look into, um, some of the complaints that have been filed. And other than that, I just wanna, um, announce adjourned in memory of Rose Knotts, who was a longtime former city employee. She retired a few years ago, and she passed away. And her services will be held on Monday, April twenty-fourth, at two PM at Forest Line. That's all of my comments. Thank you.
Madam, um, Counselwoman, Ms. Sharif.
Thank you, Madam Pro Tem. Oops. The, uh, this past Saturday, I am, I held my first annual Easter egg extravaganza at Kelly Park. We had a great time in the park, and the weather was perfect. The children played games, dyed eggs, made Easter baskets, enjoyed popcorn, snow cones, hot dogs, and candy. The girls were pampered with manicures, and everyone had the opportunity to take pictures with the Easter bunny. I want to thank Martha Barara, Bararas of Solid Eden Richment Action, Christie McDaniel of Christen, of Children Striving Together, Saul Figueroa of El Nido, Deputy Hartless and the Sheriff Explorers, Italian Chief Reginald Donald and the Fire Explorers, Marvin Hunt and all of the city staff that contributed to the success of this event. And I most certainly wanna thank my assistant, Dijuduhart. And, uh, I will be hosting my quarterly business roundtable for District Four on Wednesday, April the twenty-sixth, from ten AM to twelve PM at the Dollar High Community Center. This is an opportunity to re, to network with local businesses, meet law enforcement and city staff. A light, a light lunch will be served. Remember, businesses are the backbone of our local economy. And I would like to close in memory of Norman Harvey, a longtime resident of Compton. Mr. Harvey lived in Compton for over fifty years. All his memorial service will be held on Monday, April the twenty-fourth, at nine AM at Englewood Cemetery, Marchuary thirty-one, thirty-eight oh one, West Manchester Boulevard in Englewood. Thank you.
Is that it?
Yes.
Um, thank you. Counselwoman Sharif. Um, I think, um, I think, uh, Madam McCoy, I think we should host a town hall meeting. Um, either Gonzalez, Burrell, or City Chambers. Um, I think we need to, you know, to talk about some of the issues that arose in the last election. And I'm not saying any cheating or anything like that. I'm saying we have some issues that we need to address, because if the county is sending out wrong ballots in wrong polling places, we need to address that. And I feel it's my duty as an elected official to make sure that the election process is, um, transparent and accurate, and that it's working. Because if you have wrong ballots being sent out, we need to hold the county accountable. If that, is the county the ones that sent out the ballots, ballots, Madam Clerk?
The county, the county does not have any jurisdiction over the city elections. If there's any wrong ballots, uh, sent out, we take pictures of everything else, take, should've taken a picture of it, given it to me, and I would address it. But I'd be more than happy to address it. If you give me a location, I will double-check Sunny Cove. I can show you the ballots that were sent out. But I, I can't address anything if it never comes to me. Um, so if it, if the complaint is filed with me, I will address it. But everyone just say things, and you have to, you know, bring me some proof, and I will address it. Um, but, uh, and I, I understand that, and I, I feel it, I feel you. So that's what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna hold a town hall meeting, um, this Saturday at, this Saturday at ten o'clock, is that good? So that anybody that has a complaint can formally launch their complaint so that it can be researched by the Madam Clerk, and we as a Counsel can determine some solutions for these problems. Because we can't continue to have elections where people claim. So if you, if you got a claim, this is your opportunity to come file your claim. And we gonna research it. We gonna have, should we do it here? Where's the parking better? Burrell, Gonzalez, our Council Chambers. Gonzalez, okay, let's do that Gonzalez Park. Let's have a ten o'clock town hall meeting this Saturday. That'll be the, what, the, um... The twenty-second at ten o'clock at Gonzalez Park, and that's for, excuse me? Saturday on my calendar is the twenty-second. So I'm not sure, I meant two thousand seventeen. So, um, I mean, I can make mistakes, but I'm, I'm sure on this one, I double-checked. It's the seventeen, two thousand seventeen, April Saturday, twenty-second. So we're gonna do a ten o'clock town hall meeting, and for those of you, and it's not just focused on any district, this is a citywide complaint. If anybody has complaints, I mean, you, you, everybody's tossing the complaints around. Everybody's calling everybody, telling them what happened. You got commissioners on Facebook posting, they didn't have ballots till ten minutes to eight. So this is your opportunity to stand up for what you feel is right, and come and launch your complaint. Thank you. And I also like to, so when is our runoff election set for, Madam Clerk? June sixth.
June sixth?
Yes.
Thank you. And I'd like...
Same place, same time, same city.
Same polling places?
Same polling places. Maybe not all the same polling pla, because I don't, uh, uh, yes, all the same poll, polling places, because it'll be dis, citywide, yes.
And you know what else was confusing about this election a little bit? Spring break. The schools were closed. And it was just a little unusual to, you know, to pull up to the school, and the schools was empty. It was just a little, it was a weird day.
Schools, schools were, they, they all opened. We had contact. The school district gave us contact for each school that we used. The workers were there, they open. I mean, it might've been unusual because it wasn't people around, but the schools were open.
I'd like to close in the memory of Rodney Johnson Senior, and also, um, very dear friend of mine's mother, Emma Justine Smith. Oh, you know what? We're gonna have to change that, that location, because it's a repass at Gonzalez Park on Saturday. So you wanna do Morel, Burrell McDonald? Excuse me, sorry. No speaking out. We're talking, we're trying to come up with, uh, a date up here. Okay, so can we, Mr. City Manager, can we open the Council Chambers? Saturday, ten o'clock, Council Chambers. Saturday, the twenty-second, Council Chambers, ten o'clock. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I just wanted to, for the record, say that, uh, uh, Counselperson McCoy, um, spoke to close in the memory of Rose Knotts. She was a long-term member of the City Attorney's Office, and, uh, she will surely be missed. One of the first folks I met when I came.
And then somebody said an employee's grandmother passed. Do we have her name?
Yes, um, um, Ms. Eleanor Wooton, the, she's the grandmother of employee Kim McKenzie. She passed away today.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn? Sommo. Second. Roll call.
Counselperson McCoy.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Zarita.
Yes. Thank you.